I'm going to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the open meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting will be recorded by Norkim and may be recorded by other local meetings. Would you please rise for the point of allegiance?
My point of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for your patience, everyone, and we welcome our two new board members, Mr. Richard Wallner and Mrs. Leanne Gonzalez, and we look forward to working with you both on everything we've been working on and all of your initiatives, too. So we will begin with just get the minutes out of the way.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 6, 2019 regular session meeting minutes.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
We have two sentences. They weren't here for that meeting.
So, okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Richard Leanne, yeah.
So you write that off.
I did.
Okay. Next order of business? Minutes of the reorganization meeting?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 8, 2019 reorganization meeting minutes as written.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's unanimous. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Nobody's here for public comment. Next order of business is signing bans and bonds.
Madam Chair, did you want to take up board member reports or are we looking to?
Well, what do you? Madam Chair, I don't mind if you skip around.
Skipping over because we were waiting, but if anyone feels compelled to speed board members or otherwise, can we handle that at the end?
We can handle bonds at the end.
If that's all right with you, can we move on? Or do you want me to skip over bans and bonds as well?
The treasurer is here this evening. I don't know if we want to take that vote. She wouldn't otherwise be staying through the warrant article hearing.
Right, okay. Yes, yeah, let's go.
Madam Chair, I move.
It's a big one.
It's a long one. I'm going to put my glasses on. Madam Chair, I move that the Board take the following actions. Voted that the sale of the 2,480,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019, bonds of the town dated May 30, 2019, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $2,748,844.16, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on May 15 of the years and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows, as noted in the motion, year 2020 to 2039. Further voted to approve the sale of $7,172,077 general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated May 30, 2019, payable May 28, 2020, to Jeffries LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $27,327. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 8, 2019, and a final official statement dated May 16, 2019, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 8, 2019, and a final official statement dated May 16, 2019, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure, undertakings, and compliance with Section Rule 15(c)(12) in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertakings shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into the effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Could you repeat that?
Do we have the treasurer here? Mr. Gilberto, does he want to add to that?
No, I mean, the motion describes the approval for the borrowing that's taking place. I would note that it's two components. One is long-term bonding that's taking place, and one is for short-term bond anticipation notes, which is customarily what happens when we go through these actions. I'll be speaking later on relative to Moody's assignment of a rating relative to the town's credit during the TA report.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Moving.
Well done, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Moving along.
And Madam Chair, through you.
Thank you.
Just as a summary, the bond anticipation notes totaled just over $7 million, and the bonds themselves totaled nearly $2.7 million in borrowing. Thank you.
Do you take these?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I knew there was more.
Can we? Can we?
Madam Chair.
Do you want to read?
Yeah, and I'll sign.
Madam Chair, I move to proclaim the month of May.
Just one minute.
I just through you, Madam Chair, to the town treasurer, can the Board sign this at the conclusion of the meeting and provide it to you?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You're going to be with us anyway, right? You'll be with us anyway.
She won't be with us, but.
Oh, you will not be with us.
The Finance Director will be.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we move on to the next?
Madam Chair, I move to proclaim the month of May 2019 as Older Americans Month and to sign the proclamation.
Could you?
You want to read the proclamation first?
Well, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Then we can read it.
I'll second.
Second. All right. Would you please read the proclamation?
Yes, from the O'Leary Senior Center. Older Americans Month 2019, a proclamation, whereas the town of North Reading includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences, and whereas the town of North Reading and the O'Leary Senior Center is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and acknowledge their many valuable contributions to society, and whereas the town of North Reading and the O'Leary Senior Center recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all, and whereas the town of North Reading and the O'Leary Senior Center can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, by involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, the Select Board, the town of North Reading, do hereby proclaim May 2019 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of the community, dated this 20th day of May 2019, and it would be signed by our Chair, Catherine Manu Pelli.
So, motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have Mrs. Prine joining us, our eldest services director, who would like to say a few words.
I would just like to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for honoring our older residents in North Reading. I thank you not only for being the elder affairs director, but being an older American woman myself, so thank you for doing that. Some other folks were going to join me here tonight, but the Friends of the Council of Aging are holding the annual free tomato workshop this evening. You know, free will always override a night with the select board meeting. I apologize for that, but I'm going to the meeting myself in a few minutes. Connect, create, and contribute is this year's theme of this year's celebration of Older Americans Month. I'm happy to say that all of those are happening every day at the O'Leary Senior Center. I'm also pleased to say that the town's commitment to make North Reading an age-friendly community means age-friendly for all ages is moving forward every day. We're planning our first event this August at our national night out with the COA Board and our SSAT members to host in a formal table and hopefully find more residents in the community who want to connect to the community, create a future community, and contribute their time to make North Reading a better place to live than it is now for all ages. So thank you for doing this tonight. We look forward to the, our commitment of going forward for an age-friendly commitment, and I'm sure we're all going to help us out, so thank you.
Thank you.
All righty.
Comments, anyone?
Mary, thanks for everything you do.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to get some tomatoes.
Tomatoes, yes.
You can bring some back.
I'll bring some back.
I promise not to ask any questions. Well done, Mary.
Tell Hugo to save me some.
Excellent. All right. Next order of business. St. Teresa's Church, one-day alcohol license. Patient is a virtue. Thank you for waiting. So go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to grant a one-day wine and malt beverage license to St. Teresa's Church for an event to be held at 63 Winter Street on June 21, 2019, between the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you want to just come up and talk a little bit about what the event is? Do you want to come to the microphone and explain that? Sure.
Hi. It's a.
Would you state your name?
Carol Hudson, and representing St. Teresa's. And it's a family affair. It's on the longest day of the month. The bishop wanted a family get-together. It's not a fundraiser. It's going to have, so you all can come, bring your kids, grandkids, whatever you have, and it's $10 per person, $30 per family, no matter how many people are in the family. They have an, oh, popcorn machine. It's catered by the horseshoe. They can have a barbecue with all the fixings and desserts. They're having Richie's ice cream, popcorn. They're having cotton candy, games for the kids, cornhole for the adults. So it's just an all-day, an evening thing to get everybody together. It's not just for St. Teresa's parishioners. It's for anyone who would like to come.
And since it's catered by horseshoe, they'll have an experienced server serving the alcohol.
Correct.
Board members have any questions? Any more questions? They have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our 7:45 p.m. meeting with the CPC for a joint appointment to the Economic Development Committee.
I'll start, so I didn't have a little bit. Madam Chair, I move to jointly appoint Michael A. Prisco as associate member to the Economic Development Committee for a term to expire May 20, 2022.
Second.
So we have, yes, the EDC, so we'll vote first and then you'll vote? Okay, so Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Wallner?
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Prisco.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Mr. Prisco.
The chair votes Mr. Prisco. CPC.
And from our board, Mr. Hayden?
Mr. Prisco.
Hayden?
Mr. Prisco. Mr. Prisco.
And I see Mr. Prisco as well.
Okay. Unanimously, appoint Mr. Prisco. Thank you for hanging around, too. Next order of business is the street acceptance, Little Meadow Way.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the layout of Little Meadow Way as shown on a plan entitled "Street Acceptance Plan," Bradford Pond Estates, Little Meadow Way in North Reading, Mass., dated December 31, 2018, and a plan entitled "Roadway as Built Plan," Bradford Pond Estates, Little Meadow Way in North Reading, Mass., by signing said plan and reporting to the town.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Was that Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Leary? Oh, you were just.
No, no.
No discussion?
I just don't fully understand the issue, so.
I don't either.
But it could briefly.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you.
Can you direct us to the page that it's in and the two, take a look in here? I think it'll help explain it.
I did try to leave it over.
Forty-seven?
Forty-seven?
Sorry, I'm having a technical difficulty with downloading the packet here to that page.
Aw.
Again.
Welcome to my world.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
How far away?
So if you're looking on page forty-five of the meeting packet, there is a report to the town relative to the laying out of the way, and basically this was a public, excuse me, this is a road that was constructed in conjunction with a subdivision. Little Meadow Way is the name of the road, and the construction project, while it dates back a number of years, we're at a point where the last two house slots are under construction simultaneously, I believe, right, Danielle? And then the road has been constructed to our standards to be accepted as a public way. That can only occur after the Select Board has a hearing, notifies the residents, and takes a vote to accept the road, and then brings it to town meeting, so it's on the warrant for action by town meeting to accept it as well. And you'll see that come up in the next agenda item when we go through the listing of warrant articles. So we mailed a notice to the butters, because basically what will happen is we'll be taking an interest in property that right now is in front of their home and is private property. We're seeking to make it public property. I don't believe that there's anyone here to object to that, and it's rare when we go through this type of a street acceptance that we have objection to it because we're going to be committing to maintain it moving forward, including potentially repaving it when that time comes. There was a bit of a delay with regard to a report of the Planning Commission because of some concern over the water services, so that's the pipes connecting the water main that's underground in the street to the homes themselves. The water superintendent was out there last week with his staff. They are satisfied that any adjustments that needed to be made to those connections have occurred, so the department is satisfied that the road can be recommended for acceptance. If the Board were to vote favorably on the motion tonight, that's pending before it, this would be brought to town meeting with a favorable recommendation of the Select Board for town meeting to then vote to accept the road. It would then become a public way, a public road of the town of North Reading. We would go to the Registry of Deeds and record a taking of the property. It's a friendly taking, and we would become responsible for the road. We would also be eligible for reimbursement from the state, from state funds known as Chapter 90 funding for the maintenance of the road on an annual basis. And for the record, Madam Chair, I have been following along in the packet. It's just when we got to this page, it wouldn't upload. I don't want people to think I'm not following along.
Don't worry about it.
Sure.
These are such exciting meetings, so. And our town engineer has recommended the acceptance. It's in the packet, and the CPC has recommended acceptance. That's in the packet as well. So any further discussion?
CPC, well, you got to sign it tonight, is that what the?
They have signed it.
If I may, Madam Chair, we have before the two doors, but we will subsequent to this meeting, so we can vote in the doors and endorse, and we will vote in the doors and we will endorse it as well.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. So I have a motion and a second, and I have, I don't have anyone in favor or opposed in the room, right? Do we need to do that, or?
I could ask for comment.
I mean, is anyone here to speak, either for or against the acceptance?
Let me just hear the listener, I'm a listener.
And you're in favor of it?
You're doing great.
All right, so hearing none, and we'll move on to a vote. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Do we have to sign the Mylar warrant?
Yeah, you can, yeah, we probably can do it.
There's three sheets to this plan. It's only one copy that you need to sign.
You want us to walk up and do it?
Yeah, it'd be great. Spread it out.
All right. I know, I'm way behind, so. But this is new to me, too, so that's why.
Don't sign under the CPC.
All right, we'll take a.
Oh, use this, don't use that.
I'll take it in your briefs.
Yes, please. There you go. Good job, Rick. Zero, zero, three, we want that. Yes. You get the top block. No, no, use it. Because what'll happen, it's all right. This one, on every, you can use the sharpie, they want to stay.
Yeah, anything you can do.
Thank you.
All right. 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 All right.
Madam Chair, do we want to take up, again, I don't know if Bob wants to hang around or not, but maybe number 14 before we get into this?
I mean, we're already.
I know he's.
We're already behind.
I know he may be hanging around, but he doesn't have to anymore.
Can we do that? Yes. I think that's a great suggestion. Can we just skip to number 14 and then we'll start?
Article 14? Yes, yes, please.
No, no. I don't think we have a motion for that. Yeah, these are the articles. I don't think we have a motion for that, but I think it's just a discussion.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
So we're just going to quickly, briefly, take up the number 14 on the agenda. We're going a little bit out of order tonight, so we have Mr. Robert Mosseri, who needs no introduction, and because he's been actively involved in the negotiations with Select Member O'Leary, we wanted to keep him on board as the citizen advisor for the team which is going to be doing the wastewater negotiations with the Andover, which is now going to be from the Board, Select Member O'Leary and Select Member Schultz. But because he has this, you know, wealth of institutional knowledge and has been actively working on this for now several years and assisted and ushered with Mr. O'Leary in ushering in the water contract, we wanted to keep him on board in terms of the sewer piece of this that's in action.
There's still a little more water issues, that's all, too, as far as the FBI are being filed. And again, Mr. Mosseri's been running roughshod over our consultants and our department heads and the administration to move things along, and I think he'd be valuable if he's willing to serve, and he said he is willing to serve and continue to serve in this capacity. I think the Board would be wise to take advantage of his willingness to continue on with these issues as a citizen advisor, be able to participate.
So there's no official motion in the packet, but I think we would want to appoint him in this capacity.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Mosseri as the citizens advisor to the Water Wastewater Working Group.
I'll second that.
Okay. And Mr. O'Leary's here, and like, I mean, Mr. Mosseri's here, and as Mr. O'Leary said, he's ready, able, and willing to continue on the service, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
You're still with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
All right.
I want to thank all of board members for the consideration, and I commit to doing my best on the little water and sewer program.
We know you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mosseri.
So feel free, you could stay as long as you want, or as briefly as you'd like.
Do we have an extra seat?
No, I don't think I have to stay. I'm doing great.
All right, so now we're back to number 11 on the agenda, which is our eight o'clock hearing, informational hearing on the June 10, 2019 town meeting.
Madam Chair, through you, perhaps to the board's clerk, there is a hearing notice that's in there. We could probably waive the reading of the listing, but you may wish to read the rest of the hearing notice?
Right here. If it's all right with you, I'll just go ahead and read it.
Please do.
This is a notice of informational hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the town of North Reading that hearings on the following articles contained in the June 10, 2019 annual town meeting warrant will be held Monday, May 20, 2019, 8:00 p.m., Room 14, Town Hall, and lists of the, all the articles contained in the warrant. These hearings are held pursuant to Section 18-25 of Chapter 38 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Open Meeting Law. Any interested citizen is welcome to attend and participate in these hearings. Notice of explanation, it is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. It is our belief that these informational hearings will foster, enable more participation in town government by its citizens. The hearings will also allow the Board to make informed and considered recommendations to town meeting, and we sincerely hope that you will join us and have stayed with us for this hearing and attend the annual town meeting on June 10, 2019, from the members of the Select Board. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, as has been the custom over the past few years, we've prepared a PowerPoint presentation, and what this presentation really does is provide some detail to the information that's in the warrant the Board signed on May 6, and which is in production for printing and mailing to each resident over the next few weeks in time for the June 10 town meeting. This hearing is intended to be an opportunity for the public to learn more about the warrant and what is expected to be considered by town meeting, ahead of town meeting. It is also, of course, concurrently an opportunity for new board members to learn more about each warrant article as well in further detail if you've not been following along already. So with that, I'll go through the presentation. The first article, as is the custom, is the opportunity for amendments to the fiscal year 2019 budget. Right now, we are forecasting three amendments that need to be made. One is $40,600 in free cash that's anticipated to be needed to supplement the DPW roof repair project, which was approved in the capital budget last June at town meeting. The second is $18,500 from within the Water Enterprise budget to supplement insurance proceeds, which we have received to replace a water department vehicle which was lost, was totaled due to a loss that occurred in February. And finally, $253,615.68, which closed out to Water Department retained earnings at the end of last fiscal year, which needs to be appropriated into the reserve for banned bond premium in the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. Again, the funding source for that will be water retained earnings. For a total of three items that we know at this point in time, the Board did not make a recommendation to town meeting and generally does not make a recommendation on this article until the evening of town meeting, and that allows us to ensure that if there's any other issues that come up between now and then, we can consider it. And I've incorporated it, I thank the Finance Director for incorporating into this presentation the motions and the board members who have been identified to make the, um, the motion for each warrant article. So if you look along, you'll see motion by with a board member identified in the presentation. Um, and Madam Chair, through you, I'm gonna ask the Finance Director if she would be able to upload the draft of this presentation to the Share File folder for the meeting this evening as well, for anyone who wishes to follow along more closely than on the screen here.
Thank you.
And with that, if there aren't any questions, I'll go to the next article.
Do you have any questions? So, Mr. Wallner, we'll have you do that one?
Sure.
I just read what he did, right?
And, so, for the board members, we prepare motions for each of the articles. They're reviewed by the involved department, the town clerk, and town council. We provide a book to the board members at the town meeting. You can, you're simply expected to read the motion. Depending upon the article, there's generally a, an employee, either myself or the Finance Director, for any of the finance issues, who is available to make a presentation if any additional information is required, so you're not expected to...
You can pay the baton. Thank you.
With that, I'll go to the second article, which is the snow and ice deficit. Good news is that no deficit is projected, and we are projecting to pass over this article. Um, so there will be an opportunity, uh, there's an opportunity now for a recommendation to be made. Um, the Board may wish to vote to recommend to pass over the article. And that's not something that normally, we usually provide the Board three options: recommend, not recommend, or recommend at town meeting. In some scenarios where we have pass over, we, the Board opts to make that recommendation, although we don't print it in the warrant as that, in that fashion.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article two.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we voted on the first.
So, the first, the first article, we're going to wait and take a vote just before the town meeting, so we're not officially gonna pass it over right now because we have to wait until additional information is presented, and we, you know, will hopefully recommend, you know, at the town meeting. But as Mr. Gilberto explained, there may be additional items added in there. We don't expect that, but there may be additional items added in there between now and town meeting. The second article, the snow and ice, we don't need, we don't, we're not running in a deficit. We don't need to assign any funds to it, so we're passing it over. So, Mr. Wallner, you'll present that, and you'll be just presenting that it's a recommendation of the Board that we're passing it over.
Yep. Madam Chair, through you, um, the Board, was a vote called with regard to recommending to pass over Article two?
Did I call the vote? It was unanimous in favor of passing over. O'Leary, I'm sure.
If, uh, I've actually gone out of order. We intended to start with the warrant article relative to Little Meadow Way, so I'm gonna skip ahead to that because I know there is somebody who's in the audience here for it, and we listed it in that order as well, so I apologize for that oversight.
Just seems to be the way this is proceeding, all out of order so far. So, that would be part of the course.
So, the Select Board has recommended the article. Final house construction is underway, and finished work is being completed with regard to the road. Uh, there is final paving that has occurred to it, so it's not in binder code, and the Board has previously recommended this article. And that's pretty much the summary of our presentation on that particular article.
You said there was someone in...
There, please, as a resident, if there's any questions or...
I think he left. And Mr. O'Leary, will you present this on behalf of the Board?
Hope to be able to handle it.
So, we've already voted.
You've already recommended it.
We've already taken a unanimous vote to recommend that one. I don't have that in here, is that all?
You've, you've previously voted on it, so you don't need to vote.
All right, so moving right along to number three. We're on number three.
Getting dizzy over here.
Article three is a transfer of funds to the Town's Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. This article would propose to add one million, twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars in free cash to the fund, nine hundred thousand of which is to be used in the fiscal year twenty twenty revenue and expense plan. The Board has voted with regard to this article previously. However, meeting with the Finance Director, we're proposing to put the balance of free cash in addition to the nine hundred thousand dollars, so my recommendation would be to ask the Board to revote its recommendation this evening, and the motion would be to vote to recommend Article three.
I don't think we have that in the packet.
It's not in the packet, it's because that changed today.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article three.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Continuing along to Article four, which is a transfer of funds to the Water Stabilization Fund. Recommendation is to transfer five hundred, twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars in Water Enterprise retained earnings to the Water Infrastructure Stabilization Fund. The Board has not made a recommendation because we did not have the final number until, um, last week. We do have that number, and we prepared a motion for the Board to make a recommendation, and we would recommend the Board recommend favorably.
Do I have a motion on it?
Madam?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article four. Article four, FY two thousand and nineteen, Transfer Funds to Water Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving to Article five. This would propose to transfer five hundred thousand dollars in free cash to the Town's General Stabilization Fund, uh, was previously recommended by the Select Board and has also been recommended by the Finance Committee. Uh, the Board does not need to take any action on this article this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there aren't any questions, I'll go to Article six, which is a transfer of funds to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. We anticipate passing over this article. Um, the Select Board, um, had not made a recommendation, so much is the case, as was the case with Article...
Two.
Two. Our recommendation would be that the Board vote to recommend passing over this article. We do not have a motion presented there, but that would be the motion the Board would entertain.
I'll make a motion to pass over Article six.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So, Mr. Wallner, Articles, I have, I, you are on Articles one through six.
Okay.
And again, you'll have strategically placed town officials to assist if there's any questions arise.
Yes.
Thank you. Article seven.
Politely breathing down your neck. No.
Hopefully, it'll go more quickly than this, but...
Article seven, the transfer of funds to the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. This is an article in which we transfer any funds anticipated to remain in the stabilize, retain, to any funds anticipated to remain in the budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen solid waste costs, so it's basically money that we have raised through fees that we did not need to spend for solid waste, um, collection or disposal. We generally transfer it near the end of the fiscal year at June town meeting, the fiscal year ending on June thirtieth. So, this is something that we're looking at, thirty thousand dollars is the projected number. Um, I believe to, to the Finance Director through the Chair that we settled that thirty thousand dollar would be the final number, so the Board could vote to recommend Article seven, and I believe there's a motion in there that reflects that.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article seven, Transfer of Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Article eight would appropriate money for the participating funding arrangement. We do not anticipate making fiscal year twenty nineteen transfer at this time. We would therefore recommend that the Board vote to recommend passing over this article.
Madam Chair, I, I make a motion to pass over this article. Article eight, Appropriate Money for Participating Fund.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article nine.
Article nine is a routine article relative to authorizing the Select Board to choose routine town officers. We'll correct that slide before town meeting so it reads properly at Select Board. The Board has previously recommended the article, and no action is required this evening. Article ten, To Hear and Act on Reports of Town Officers and Committees. There, um, will be an opportunity where I'll provide some introductions for new employees, and there may be any number of Boards or committees that may, that may wish to report to town meeting, and the moderator has generally entertained requests right up until the start of town meeting, or even during the consideration of the article. And there is no need for action by the Board at this time because the Board previously voted to recommend the article. Article eleven would authorize a DPW Director to accept easements. Uh, this provides the ability for the DPW Director on behalf of the Town to accept easements for drainage or other purposes. Um, the Board's previously recommended the article, and no action is required this evening. Article twelve authorizes the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements. That allows the Town Treasurer to enter into agreements with banks through which a portion of the interest earnings of deposits are retained by the bank in exchange for the services, rather than the Town having to appropriate money and make a direct payment to the bank. The Board has previously recommend, the, recommended the article, and no further actions required this evening.
So, just one second. So, Select Member Council, as you have Article six through twelve.
Okay.
Article thirteen authorizes a Chapter ninety construction. We anticipate rece, anticipate receiving five hundred sixteen thousand, seventy-three dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty from the state. The Board's previously recommended, uh, therefore no action is required this evening. Article fourteen is the prior year bills. Uh, they require a four-fifths, uh, vote of town meeting for payment. We do not anticipate any at this point in time. However, we recommend that the Board not make a recommendation till the evening of town meeting, just to provide a window for anything else to come in, um, to be considered. Article fifteen is the operating budget. It's voted in two motions, uh, with available funds and then debt service. We have a separate presentation that I'm not going to go through this evening. We went through it at a budget hearing in the previous meeting. The Board has previously recommended the budget, and therefore no action is required this evening. Uh, the Finance Committee was unable to make a recommendation prior to the printing of the warrant. However, my understanding is that they will consider a recommendation the evening of town meeting. Thank you. Article sixteen, the fiscal year twenty twenty town capital budget. This was presented to the Board on April twenty-second, approved by the Board that evening. The Board's previously recommended the Articles, this article, the detailed report, including all of the appropriations, was printed in the warrant or will be printed in the warrant that will be mailed to each home. Um, there's a listing here. I'm not going to go through, uh, each item, uh, because it was reviewed in an exhaustive fashion, um, but, uh, it matches what was in the warrant that was, that's being printed by the printer and mailed to people's homes. Article seventeen is to rescind authorizations to borrow. Um, we are not expecting any action at town meeting. Therefore, the Board may wish to consider this evening a motion to pass over Article seventeen.
I make a motion to pass over Article seventeen, Rescind Authorization to Borrow.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Article eighteen would fund retirement obligations. It's funded through Raise and Appropriate in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. The Board previously recommended this article, therefore no action is required this evening. Article nineteen would transfer funds to our Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, and that is a fund that's been set up for the Town to set aside funding to pay the long-term costs associated with health care for its retirees, for whom the Town is responsible for health care. We propose to transfer in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars from Raise and Appropriate. It was factored into our operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty and into our revenue and expense plan for that year. The Board has previously recommended the article, and therefore no action is required this evening. And this is in accordance with a plan that we set up roughly four years ago to dedicate a certain amount of funding each year.
Questions?
Article twenty appropriates money for permitting software. This is twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars that would be free cash to supplement a state grant that we received for permitting software to streamline, uh, the conduct of permitting here in the Town Hall, with a focus on the Building Department, but also the associated departments. Um, there was a couple of modules that the State was unable to provide grant funding for. This would allow us to secure those, as well as to address any staff time needed to implement the project over the next few months. The Select Board previously recommended the article, and therefore no action is required this evening. Article twenty-one would fund repairs to town buildings. This is one for which detail was not available at the last meeting. Um, we have two proposed projects that are in there. Um, one is for the HVAC system for the library activity room in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, and the other is for a proposed renovation to accommodate a new position in the Administration Office for the two new board members. That's a, um, Grant Writer slash, slash, Project Manager that is slated to be in the Administrator, in the Town Administrator's office. Looking to try to accommodate that within the footprint of the office at this point in time. It does require some, uh, work. It's also, would impact the Board in that, the space in question is the Select Board's office. Uh, we're hoping to remove the cabinets that are in there. There's some plumbing that's in there that's underutilized as well, moving some file cabinets as well, to try to make the space a little more updated and also accommodate a second workstation. Um, so, those are the two that are there. That, that project has not been discussed, uh, and therefore no recommendation has been made. We would ask the Board to consider recommending the article to town meeting. And I should add that this is an article that has customarily been approved at town meeting in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. However, it generally has been heard at October town meeting. We've been working hard throughout the preparation for June town meeting to really minimize the number of financial articles requiring action at October town meeting, so we've moved this article from this coming October to June.
Madam Chair, I move to, uh, recommend Article twenty-one at town meeting.
Second. A motion and a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I didn't...
Opposed? None? It's unanimous, we'll recommend it at town meeting.
No, no, excuse me. Recommend to town meeting. Favorable recommendation. I apologize.
Okay. So, do we have to amend that? Because I thought you, I thought you voted to wait till town.
No, no, I'm sorry. No, my intention was to recommend it...
Recommend this.
To town meeting.
I'll second the...
At town.
No, to town meeting. Recommend it, we're gonna recommend the article.
Not at it, but to it.
Not at it. I did say at it, so you have it correctly. I just, I didn't mean what I said.
I will second them.
So, okay.
So, the original motion is...
The original motion is...
It's to recommend.
It's to recommend.
I circled recommend, so, as far as I'm concerned, you recommended it.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. She knew what you were saying.
She understood.
So, yes. All right, so it's recommended and...
Great, thank you.
By, at least by us.
Article twenty-two would appropriate money for special counsel legal expenses. Um, this would allow for additional funding for legal expenses related to the secondary school building project if needed. Um, we, the Board has received a recent update, and our recommendation of the Board is to recommend passing over Article twenty-two.
I move to pass over Article twenty-two, Appropriate Money for Special Counsel Legal Expenses.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Article twenty-three would establish a School District Reserve Fund for unanticipated and unbudgeted costs for special education out of district tuition or transportation. The fund would need to be capitalized with funds from town meeting, but a majority approval, a majority vote of both the Select Board and the School Committee would allow for funding to be transferred out of the fund. And this was a product of some deliberations by the Financial Planning Team, uh, at which the Board is represented, and it was intended to provide a, a, a safety valve, if you will, or, or a source of funds to address, uh, the items identified in the first bullet, anything unanticipated or unbudgeted relative to special education, out of district tuition, or transportation. Um, I know that the School, um, Finance and Operations Director is here this evening. Mr. Conley, thank you for being here. Uh, those do, you know, from sitting in the Financial Planning Team meetings, I know that those do happen to be some of the most volatile areas of the budget. Uh, you'll see in the next article, we're proposing to transfer a hundred thousand dollars into the fund. That requires town meeting action, but the access to that fund is under the control of the Select Board and the School Committee through separate majority votes. The Board previously recommended the article, therefore no actions required this evening. And I want to thank Mr. Conley for his efforts with Superintendent Bernard to research this as the, an option that was available to us, and I know it, I believe it's been supported by the Finance Committee. Ms. Hurlbut?
We recommend it.
Thank you very much for your support. Madam Chair, through you, Article twenty-four, the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from free cash into this fund, um, re, previously recommended by the Select Board and by the Finance Committee, um, no actions required this evening.
So, Mr., Mr., Mr. Schultz, I have you as presenting Articles, um...
Nineteen through twenty-four.
Yes, nineteen through twenty-four, yes. All right. And Mr. O'Leary? The rest is yours.
Well, the rest is for me.[1770.83] You get Swan Pond. Is that right?
Mr. Gilbert?
We're dealing with it for years.
Article twenty-five is the appropriation of funds for the survey, engineering, design, and/or construction of a portion of Swan Pond Road in the vicinity of Swan Pond. A commitment was made to June town meeting last year that authorization from all property owners would be received prior to contracting for stormwater management evaluation, which is required for paving to occur because of the proximity to Swan Pond, which is a drinking water supply for the town of Danvers. There is one owner of two properties that has declined to sign off. The properties in question are halfway down the gravel portion of the road, thereabouts, and a bit of a challenging area of the road. I think even if a resolution were identified to this issue, the study is unlikely to be completed by June tenth town meeting. It would certainly be an aggressive timeline. The, to the board, after the last discussion, the DPW Director and I had some conversation along with the town engineer about what our options could be for proceeding with this, and one of the options is to basically terminate the project just prior to the two properties that are in question. My suggestion to the board would be to review that with town meeting since we did make a commitment relative to the entirety of the road. I think the concern that we would have, that we would just want the board to be aware of, is the failure to sign off means that we can't walk on two of the properties, other than to pass through the gravel portion of the road to survey them. We think we could probably get away with getting a general understanding of the wa- the watershed challenges that are there without going on these two parcels of land. But the, the secondary problem that we have is the, the sign off was also an initial authorization of willingness to have the road paved. So we don't have that from one of the property owners right now, and I know it's a challenge to, to get it, unfortunately. So that's kind of where this stands with regard to it. We tried to look as creatively as we could. I don't think that the engineer and the DPW Director feel comfortable with paving up to, not paving the two roads in the middle and paving beyond it. I don't want to speak for them, but I know that that's a, a concern. But we do have an option if we wanted to limit the project to up to the point where we have the break in authorization, but I guess we could do that. My suggestion would be to seek town meeting approval because we did make the commitment to town meeting.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just, John, maybe you could help us out. You know, what have we, and I know it's a, a challenge to, to work around this property owner because it's unfortunate. I mean, this is, there's, there's another property owner who hasn't signed up but is at the very end of the street and has no impact on the, on the proposed project. This one here is, is far more challenging, but from a, from just a surveying standpoint and taking a look at the extent of what the project would entail without this property owner signing off, how can we proceed? How, how far have we proceeded and what, what more can we do?
So we have, we have John Cliffell, town engineer. Good evening. Welcome, new, new board members.
Thank you.
I've, I've been out there multiple times, driven up and down the street. The two properties that are in question where the, the resident hasn't signed off, there's, there's kind of a localized issue right there, just on those properties. The, the houses are very close to the road, but that's kind of isolated. And then the bigger drainage issue is beyond that property where there's, there's a wetland crossing currently that collects a lot of drain water.
But we have authorization from those properties.
So everything past that.
Part of that's the town also, right?
Correct. So there's twenty-seven hundred feet of road in question. There's about eleven hundred feet up to the property owner that will not sign off, so it's almost half. And then they own about five hundred, three or four hundred feet, I believe, and then there's another thousand feet past that. So they're kind of like right in the middle, and the road doesn't just go straight across their property. You kind of really have to see it to, to understand it, but the road comes in, zigzags around the house, and trees very tight to each other, and then goes back in more of a linear fashion.
But in order to get the preliminary work done to get an idea as to what the scope would be, can we work around it?
Sure. I mean, we can, we can do an engineering study of everything before and after and going through the property. We'd have to really get out of our vehicles and take some measurements and some widths and some, and shoot some grades, which wouldn't be very invasive. But we could get a, a total picture of what we needed.
This is what we were talking about initially, was, was getting an idea of the scope, the work that would need to be done. And unfortunately, this property owner is through, through a hurdle in the road here.
Right, right.
Little roadblock. But I would think that we'd be able to work around most of this in order to get, to be able to quantify things for the rest of the residents up there.
So we could do an evaluation. The question is if we can't get a sign off from that one property owner in the middle, is it worth it spending the money to do the evaluation of the whole road if, if we don't know what's going to happen in the middle?
Well, again, but you would have a better idea as to, you know, that three hundred feet, really what it means, you know, from a runoff standpoint. And, you know, how critical is it?
Yeah.
You know, as far as evaluating the project. And again, at some point, they, they could change their mind. And again, my understanding is, you know, they're not interested in paying, but other residents are, up there are willing to, to chip in to get it done. So some more neighborhood negotiations that need to take place in order to bring this thing forward. I mean, this has been ongoing for the new members for years, and years.
Years.
Nineteen eighty-nine or something.
And years. And, and we've gotten so close where all the other residents up there have signed off other than this one property owner. And unfortunately, it's, you know, right smack dab in the middle of things. But to me, I think, you know, we made a commitment to go up there and see if we could evaluate. Yes, it was based upon the sign offs of everybody, but we've got everybody but one property owner. If there's a workaround, we should see if we can work around, just to get an answer, because we don't know. We haven't quantified this whole thing yet.
Mr. Schultz?
My only concern is that we want to help these people out, obviously, is I don't think the town should be appropriating a dollar until we know we can actually do the project. Because if this homeowner is going to just not sign off on it, it's never going to get done. So we're going to spend all this money doing survey, engineering, design work for something that's going to sit at town hall and collect dust. I think it moves the residents to get an agreement with that one property owner, and then I think that it's appropriate for the town to sign off on the engineering studies. Otherwise, we're just kind of throwing money after something that may or may not happen. And I, I wish it would happen, but they're going to, they have to meet together as residents and work something out there.
Wait, can you remind, remind us again why, why there's no other, it's the topography that prevents the road from going in any other manner through that area, or is it just because it's private, all privately owned?
I think that originally that would, you know, they were just camps along the, the pond, and that was just the way that they built the road. It just kind of, you know, they saw a tree and they went right, you know, they just, and, and, and the big difficulty with this for the new board members is that a lot of this is, it's, it's not a, an accepted, you know, or not a, an unaccepted private way. This is private property that the road goes through. There's no right of way through that property. There was a land court case that was, that was done in the past. I don't believe our lawyers have, have looked into that.
They, they have, and, and, well, it determined definitively through you, Madam Chair, that the property owners on the road have the right to pass and repass over each other's property to get to their own property. It, it doesn't make the road a public way. It's not been accepted by a town, by, by the town. The road has not been laid out in the fashion that you did just a few moments ago relative to Little Meadow Way. I, I, I should note that that is an option that's available to the town, and we have a bylaw that allows for us to go through a formal street acceptance process, but going back now, goodness, is it a year? More than a year? A year and a half? Well, twenty years more. But going back to the most recent iteration of this, there was some apprehension on the part of the board and on the part of the property owners because there's a significant engineering cost associated with that. Essentially, we were trying to identify the least expensive option for getting pavement down on the gravel road that's there. But that option did not include us taking the road as town-owned property. We would effectively be getting authorization from the, the abutting property owners, or the owners on which the road is located, to, to pave it in some share that's not been determined at this point financially.
And that, that would actually, I'm assuming, require some type of eminent domain taking as well, wouldn't it? Because it's all private.
There would be a taking, absolutely.
Yes, so, I mean, that, that's a pretty hefty cost factor to, to the town.
It also creates zoning non-compliance for a number of properties there. You, you can see clearly the ones I've drawn, that trapezoidal figure around. They would, their, you know, single-house lots would effectively become, two lots would become four, and that has its own zoning implications that are a challenge there. So I, I just don't know that that's a viable option. I'm just noting that it is an option that's prescribed under our bylaws.
What we have is a situation where, you know, the, the road is being maintained by the town. It has been widened over the years, and, you know, we're putting gravel and sand and several times a year in order to maintain safe, safe ac- access for public safety vehicles. And it's just, you know, we're continuously spending money up there anyway. We've got a, a willingness on the part of all the residents, the exception of one, to chip in and help make the situation better, so.
Mrs. Gonzalez? Excuse my ignorance because I'm new to this whole thing, but are there any paper roads that you can use to go around that property? I'm sure you've looked at all that, but-
Yeah, no, I mean, the big, open, white spaces, that's all, that's all wetland area. There's a lot of wetland area out there. Yeah, they've, they kind of built the road in the, in the best way to get through. It's all very overgrown and-
Because I know where I live used to, it used to be camps, and I think that's, a lot of the town was. And there's a lot of little paper roads that, you know, if you looked, that you can use, so.
Yeah, that's what makes this project unique. It's, it's not, there are no paper roads or unaccepted private ways. This is just a gravel road going between people's prop, going through people's properties, bisecting them, with no formal layout. And there's a, there's a lot of grade and elevation changes that don't show up on, on the map as well because it's near the lake. It kind of slopes down towards the lake, and then the road goes up and down pretty significantly through the, through the length of it.
Any other comment? I mean, I think the board is, is fully supportive of what the resident, has been fully supportive of what the residents want to do there, but it, it seems more of a private, that they maybe need to do some type of private transaction or action to-
I just don't- I, I think that the town at this point could still get a better sense of really the scope of the project that we'd be looking at if we, and again, I think we can work around this one property owner. Because that's what we're looking for initially from the town engineer, just to give us an idea as to what the scope and scale of the project would be. What are we really talking about? And then we could continue. If we can work around these individuals, then, you know, then work around it and get the answers to the question that we were looking for anyway. And if these people had signed off, we'd be doing it. They haven't signed off, so we can work around them just to get a better idea.
Even if you work around them?
I'd say work around for, for, for the-
Engineering.
Yeah, just for the engineering or the-
But once that's done, if they don't sign off, then you still can't do anything, right?
Yeah, you spent money engineering that's sitting on a shelf.
That you can't even do. You still can't do anything.
That's the problem. I understand what Steve's, I agree with you. We, we do some of these people, but I can't see spending the money on something that, as it looks now, it probably won't happen.
And again, have you even talked to the residents about taking it up as far as we can? Again, any improvements up in this area is an improvement.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if we go to that point, I'm fine with that.
Well, then you're missing the whole other side of it, too. You'd have to-
You also have an issue. These residents bought a house on a dirt road, and there's a lot of residents in this town that bought a house on a dirt road. Do we want to fix every dirt road in the town? That's what you're walking down. And it just, I think they got to figure out something with this resident. They got to sit down with him and him or her and work something out. We can't spend the money on something that may not even be built.
I, I agree, I agree to a, to a certain extent, but we've got, we've moved past that already, and, and they've come to us with the petition. We've been, we've been, as a board, fully supportive of the board.
But we told them you have to have everybody sign off. That's been a requirement.
And they're, they're trying. I think they appreciate the board's ongoing support, but there's a letter in the file for, for that. So I, I don't think we should just give it up, but I don't think there's enough to, to, you know, we're at a, we're at the same standstill as the residents here.
Yeah.
And, and at less ability to move something forward beyond just taking a study of it or taking a look at it, so.
Well, I mean, if we can take it, if we can do a thousand feet of this road, of eleven hundred feet of it, I mean, to me, from a public safety standpoint and access and degress standpoint, it's, it's, it's a significant improvement to the area. So, you know.
Is the objection because they're going to pave more? It just gets paved in front of them. What is the objection by the resident?
Yeah, what is?
I'd be happy to speak to you offline.
Okay. Well, it sounds like paving as much as you can would make sense.
Yeah.
You know. That's not fair to the other people on your side.
It isn't, but that's not us. That's, that's that.
Yeah, but I, I wouldn't support that.
Neighbor.
So you're going to do nothing?
I think you have to get the, we gave the residents a directive. You get everybody on board, we'll do this for you. They haven't done that. I mean, I'm not saying it's their fault, but how many studies do we have at town hall that we have that we're not using for one reason or other? There's going to be all of them.
Take it as far as we can take it at this point. And again, if we can work around as far as, you know, without spending a lot of funds, just to give you an idea as to what the scope magnitude of the rest of the project would be, fine, but-
How much is this going to cost?
So, so if I could just, let me just, we're, we're actually talking about a warrant article where we're asking people to vote to appropriate an amount of money. We really don't have any idea about. So at least for tonight's purposes, we, we, we don't want to give it up, but we, we're not going to be,
Well, I also don't want-
Do you want to wait till town meeting to see what?
No, and I also don't want to waste any more time as far as, you know, not looking into it either. In other words, if we're going to talk about taking it to a certain point, then at least give them the direction to go take a look to a cer- certain point, you know? So the town meeting can make an informed decision as to whether or not they want to do it piecemeal or all at once. My guess is, my guess is, you know, at this particular point in time, it, it's going to be an update to town meeting as to what the status of things are. And, but I, I would like the town to have more information, as much information as we possibly can, to bring to town.
How do we get the cost of this? I guess it is kind of hard to vote on something on what the cost is. How, how do we get?
So, so the study has, through you, Madam Chair, so the study was previously funded at town meeting. We have the funds available to do it. We told town meeting we were going to get the sign off of all the property owners. To Mr. O'Leary's point, I think, we do have an opportunity at June town meeting to indicate to town meeting. We don't have all of the sign off. We're going to proceed with the study for the portions before and after this anyway, and allow town meeting the opportunity to weigh in.
Do we know how much that's going to cost, though?
I would say it was thirty thousand dollars. John, is that right?
Yeah, ten thousand dollars was the, the engineering study, just to tell us what type of drainage we're going to need out there. And then beyond that, we'll know the number of the price of how much the drainage installation would cost, and then we could give you a price on the paving as well. This study is to identify the drainage issues and create a cost.
It would just be ten thousand?
The ten thousand dollars just to do the, the study, the survey, essentially.
Okay.
But you're just going to skip over this parcel and do a survey of up to, and then cross over, and then the rest? Basically what you're going to do, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do bits and pieces of it, you know? I mean, the ten thousand dollars was to do the whole thing. If we, we could do, definitely do the first half, no problem. We can do the second half. We can, you know, look at the middle and see what, what we think that might take. You know, it's hard to start piecemealing it.
Is that able to be done to give some sort of an estimate to, to town meeting, or is it too late to do that at this point?
I'd have to talk to a consultant, a consultant that we had spoken with earlier and gave us the, the estimate, what their schedule would be. I mean, we're, we're cutting it really close at this point.
So we're pro, all we're trying to do with this article is appropriate ten thousand dollars?
No, it's already done.
It's already been appropriated.
So what are we doing in Article twenty-five? What are we appropriating?
So this has been a standing placeholder for us to authorize, to seek appropriation of funding for the actual construction project, the amount of which would need to be informed by the study that has not yet been completed.
All right, so we got to pass over that, obviously, for June?
Presumably.
I don't know what the number is going to be.
Part of the issues, we've, we've been limited by the statements made at the June town meeting. We're not able to complete the study because we don't have all the sign offs in effect. If the board wishes to direct us otherwise, we'll certainly respond to that, but we've been limited in what we can do because we don't have the sign off that we represented at town meeting.
So if you did this study, and you did this half and that half, and then you're kind of guessing what might happen here, and then it goes through, he signs off, do you have to go back and redo that study?
If we don't get the complete information from his property, then we'd have to evaluate just that small portion again in the future.
So you'd need more, more funds for that?
And I don't expect there's a huge, there's a huge issue in that section, but it is kind of a localized drainage area that would need to be looked at in more depth. If the directive is not to walk on those two properties or do any survey on those two properties, we can do before and after, and then we'd have to just fill in the middle. And we could tell you the price of how much it's going to cost for drainage before and after, and paving before and after, and then we-
Can we do the survey staying on the road, or do you have to get off the road to?
Yeah, you'd have to really shoot some grades with a, with a survey, with survey instruments.
I think you have a right to be on the road if we're maintaining the road.
Right. Right, that's the, where do the limits of that for, you know, end?
Right.
I mean, I, so what's the, what's the board's pleasure here? What, what do we want to do? Where, we're going to-
The question is, do we want to authorize the survey to take place, not do we want appropriate money?
The monies are appropriated.
Monies are appropriated.
So in, through you, Madam Chair, if this proceeded the way everyone expected, we would be here before you this evening with the study completed, an estimate of the cost for- An estimate of the cost for the stormwater work that's required and an estimate of the cost for the actual pavement being installed as well, as well as any other tree work. We'd have the whole package for you. And then there would be another probably lengthy discussion about how we're gonna actually fund the project because that's something that has not yet been resolved. There has been a tradition of doing what I'll call a fifty-fifty sharing of costs between the abutting property owners and the town. I've heard that that's been proposed as a potential model for this. But, you know, again, that has not been determined with regard to the, the project. But for us to be able to, you know, based on what we have, if we're gonna do the stormwater study, we need directions because we've only been directed in accordance with what was represented at town meeting. And we're not able to fulfill the representation at town meeting. So if the board wishes to direct us to conduct the study regardless, we can do that. I just, I don't foresee it's gonna be done in time for June town meeting. And even if it is, the whole question of how we fund it is unlikely to be resolved. Never mind, are we seeking feedback from the capital improvement planning committee and the other factors that go with it?
Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, our presentation to town meeting was, was made with the, the best of intentions in anticipation of cooperation from the residents up there. And we have one uncooperative resident, you know, who is harming the opportunities for everybody else up there. For me, and again, I'm, I keep pressing on this thing here because it's been pressing for years here on me, you know, my phone has been ringing out for years. It justifies why we saw. So to, to me, if we can do a work around this particular property owner, let's just move forward with what we have already appropriated. Get the answers to the questions that we have and it's gonna, there'll be more questions, but at least we'll have a better idea as to what we're facing here and whether or not it's feasible. So, uh, yeah, some are familiar with the area up there and this particular section of the road doesn't appear to be underwater, you know?
Yeah, it's not a contributor to the rest of the road, it's kind of like an isolated area that.
Right, so it's, it's not as though it's a, it's a critical area where it dips down and you're gonna have runoffs and all the rest. This is pretty, it's windy, but it's pretty flat. Uh, but so to me, you know, let's just move forward and get some answers to the questions that we have and try and quantify as best we can. And again, it's not gonna be for, 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 still, this June town meeting, but at least we'll have a report saying we're moving forward on it.
And how?
So we have the town engineer basically indicating we can do that workaround just to get an idea or get a sense of it. Doesn't mean we're gonna fund the project because we, or arrange for funding or funding or what have you. So do we have a, at least a consensus, are we all in favor of at least directing that this, this take place as a workaround? Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I would, with the, yes, with the caveat of, how many miles of dirt roads do we have in this town right now?
We have five miles of dirt roads.
All right. I think if we start putting town money into, see the problem with the dirt roads, the public knows at home when, I don't, I don't think this was a development, but like when the builder depots a development, they usually will put a road in. Now, you get some of these newer houses in town, and these are older houses, but some houses in town that we, the builder never put the money in and now it's left to the town to pick up that tab. I don't know if that's right, cause when these folks bought on this property, they know they bought on a dirt road. And so I just concerned that if you're gonna build a dirt, a road for these guys, you have the other five miles of road that you're gonna now be paying to build a dirt road for.
So.
It's a precedent that we, we gotta be careful.
I know you, I know you mentioned that already, but we already basically got the informator of the town at the town meeting to move forward with this one specific section. We had a lot of support that appeared.
For the engineering.
That's right, to just at least push that, push that portion.
No, I would support that piece, but I just want to be cautious of us paying for dirt roads.
Doesn't, doesn't, we're not even anywhere near there yet. And we also had Mr. Kellner who stood up multiple times and said, we already have a roadway improvement plan in the works. And some roads have been slated for improvement for years, accepted ways. So this is basically only one, not the five miles of the dirt road. This is only one specific section. We had a number of the citizens, the residents come forward wanting this, we had approval at town meeting. So doesn't mean we're gonna fund it, doesn't mean we can do that work of improving it yet, we don't know that, that was the purpose of the study. So at least if we can get you to the point of, we're, we're sort of morphing what was directed to be done and, and Mrs. Hurlbut wants to make some comments as well.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to, are you talking about Don Kellner?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
The roast program that Don Kellner ran myself on the Capitol three years ago discussed has nothing to do with dirt roads. The, the idea originally was that the Board of Selectmen would come up with a policy about how to address citizens who wanted the town to go in and improve their dirt roads. It has nothing to do with Don Kellner, I don't believe.
Other than Don's point.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it does, that wasn't the point I was making.
But, but Don's point was well taken, that, you know, he just said, you know, we have twenty-two or twenty-four miles of, of roads in need of repair right now.
Right, that are already on a, on an organized.
Before we go down this path, you know, but a separate issue to Abby's point where if the town is willing to come up with some sort of agreement, people are not accepting streets to improve them, that's a different program, that's a different discussion.
So we need to move on. So we have once again discussed this for quite a long time.
So I'm just trying to get some directive from the board to the administration to move forward.
Yes, and I think are we all in favor of doing so?
Moving forward on ten thousand dollars then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, I would just ask the board for a motion to be approved, given the fact that.
I'll make a motion to recommend article.
No, no, no. We can't do that.
No, we can't do that.
Madam Chair, I, I move to, I don't want to say direct.
Construct.
To encourage, to encourage the administration to move forward with the engineering study of Swamp Pond Road project.
Despite the fact that we don't have full, or is it a?
Yeah.
I would second that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you need us?
Thank you, thank you.
Do what you can do, tell us what you can tell us.
No problem.
And thank you for staying here and sitting in on this. That's yours, Mr. O'Leary, finally.
I'm just gonna move to pass over.
Well, we're not, we're.
So we'll have a recommendation at town meeting, so that's what we have.
We don't wait on that one, so we're not, right, not yet, not yet.
So we'll leave that as it is.
Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, I do want to congratulate the town engineer on the birth of his third daughter, Emily Gray.
Wow.
Congratulations.
On Friday.
Congratulations, John.
You look good, you're holding up well.
You're awake, you're right.
Came in to get some rest.
Yeah.
No wonder he's hanging around this time.
That's great.
Through you, Madam Chair, Article twenty-six, the approval of the Hillview Golf Cart lease for terms in excess of three years. This would authorize the Hillview Commission with the approval of the town administrator to enter into leases in excess of three years, which is the statutory maximum under state law for golf carts. The commission customarily seeks to lease golf carts over a five-year term. That's a model that has been identified to be advantageous and this would authorize that. The select board previously recommended the article and therefore no action is required this evening. Article twenty-seven would amend the general bylaws for restriction on single-use plastic bags. This is something that was proposed by the board in its discussion of warrant articles. We consulted with town council to come up with language that would restrict the use of single-use plastic bags with limited exceptions. We based it on language from town council, feedback from the DPW, feedback from the health director. I, I believe that the select board was waiting to hear from the board of health with regard to this particular matter. The board of health is consider, is scheduled to discuss this draft bylaw. However, it will not be till its meeting on Wednesday evening, so that feedback is not available for discussion this evening. The language that the board reviewed at the May sixth meeting is what was included in the warrant and will be mailed to individuals' homes. And the board will have an opportunity to consider feedback from the board of health at its meeting on June tenth. And therefore, we're not recommending, the board has the option to make a, a recommendation, but we don't have any further information to provide, at least at this point in time.
We're gonna wait on that one.
And we can wait on it, but again, I, I just think it's a, it's an important step for town and north running to come up to the times, get on board from an environmental standpoint. We're not reinventing the wheel here, we're not, um, leading the charge here, we're not blazing any new trails. We're just playing a little bit of catch-up here and I think what's being proposed is not as stringent as it is in some communities and stringent enough to help make a difference. So, you know, I would, we withheld our recommendation, a couple, two new board members came on board so that they could weigh in also as to whether or not they thought it was a worthy cause. So I would encourage you to come on board and recommend it to town meeting.
Madam Chair, through you, I, I misspoke, there is one piece of information, it's relative to the town of Tuxbury, which I was asked to investigate. Tuxbury had a warrant article on in the fall, I believe, to put a restriction in place similar to this. There was another article that was on their warrant for their spring town meeting. That article would have repealed the bylaw with the restriction. The repeal failed at town meeting and I do know that my counterpart, the town manager, recommended against the repeal. And the reason for the recommendation against the repeal was because they wanted to provide an alternative location for the disposal of single-use plastic bags. Rather than having them go into the general recycling stream and cause problems in, in, for them, what I believe is single street recycling. For us, it would be dual street recycling. And we have heard that that's an issue. A lot of times, people are putting their recyclables in these plastic bags from Stop and Shop or otherwise, putting them into the bucket. When they go through the machines for sorting the recycling, they basically cause the machine to stop functioning properly. Takes time and effort to remove the plastic from the machine. So in the, at least in the case of Tuxbury, they advocated against the repeal of the warrant article.
Mr. Schultz.
I just want to voice my opposition to this. I, I think it hurts the consumer, I think it's gonna hurt the two people that we need to protect most is your seniors and your people on fixed incomes. Cause the cost of goods is gonna go up in town, I don't think this has an environmental impact at all, um, very de minimis. I just think the government needs to stay out of people's lives, instead of getting more involved in people's lives. What are we gonna ban next? I mean, I don't know, plastic water bottles, I, I don't know, where, where do you start when you start going down this path? I just think it's gonna hurt the consumer and it's gonna hurt seniors the most, because they're gonna pay more for goods in town. So I'm, I'm gonna be voting against this article.
I will be voting against it also. I have done a lot of research on this and agree that it doesn't make that much of a difference. It hurts the small business, it hurts the seniors who use those as trash bags, so they don't have to carry big trash bags. And people will actually be buying more kitchen-sized trash bags, which are worse for the environment. So, um, I will also not be recommending that.
I, I don't see how this is going to be. I, I think the harm that's being done now is far out, far outweighs any few pennies that people have to pay a little bit more in order to carry something home. I know it's not convenient, but we're not talking about convenience, we're talking about environmental impacts and what's, what's already occurring. And I think, you know, while you say it's de minimis, you know, is town and north running gonna make a difference? But I know, we know the town of north running with the town of running with the town of Tuxbury with the city of Boston can make a difference and should be making a difference. You know, so it, it's not dollars and cents. This is an environmental issue that needs to be addressed and, you know, the failure to address it at the federal level and at the state level doesn't mean that we should ignore it at the local level. And that's where they listen. When things happen at the local level from the ground up, then the people in the higher up levels of government will listen and hopefully react to it. So to me, this is far more than a matter of inconvenience, far more than a matter of a few extra cents. My oldest son had the benefit of me cleaning his car this weekend while he was out of town at the academy. And he lives in city of Boston and in his car, I mean, he probably had fifteen Stop and Shop bags from the city of Boston, which are reusable. Which I think he paid an extra ten cents for every single one. So I reminded him over the weekend that, you know, you don't have to spend another ten cents, you've got fifteen of those bags in the back of your vehicle right now, I'll fold it up and ready to be used again. And yes, they're plastic, but they're such a caliber that it's, you know, reusable and recyclable. So it's time for the town and north running to get on board. It's time for, to us to remind ourselves that, you know, the few extra cents that it might cost us for packaging. Again, we're not looking to roll this out tomorrow, we're looking to roll it out for the first of the year. So for those local businesses that already have a supply, they can use that supply up. But when they're reordering, they're gonna have to reorder something which is reusable, you know? And it's, again, it's, they can still be plastic products, they just have to be recyclable and usable, reusable. So, you know, I think it's not de minimis, in my estimation.
I'm not saying it's de minimis.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schultz, this is.
I think it's de minimis, yeah.
It's not de minimis, to me, it's key with it.
Can we all not talk over one another, just one at a time? Everyone is very opinionated about this topic, so.
So I think it's important for us.
But Jane has to keep, keep track of everyone.
So I think it's important for us to, you know, put forward the proposal, town meeting will speak. And, and I think as members of the board, we should be leaders of the community. And again, think global and act local, right? That was an old bumper sticker, it's still, it's still around, I gotta get one.
Mr. Wallner?
Um, I, I, I understand the issue about when they're processing the recyclables and these bags get caught up in the machines and it causes a huge problem. It's down the line, that's the problem. And we already know that China and other places are rejecting recyclables, they're taking, they're taking that out of the stream. And I have seen more and more in my own family and other people as well, they're just getting conditioned to bringing in the same bag over and over, they're reusing their own bags. So I think the world needs to change and we can do a little bit here. But the biggest thing is the plastic gets inside the recyclable and that kills the machines and that's a huge efficiency issue. That really affects us all, so I, I will be voting for us to do that.
I'll just add to that, that we've, we've seen that become an issue in terms of our contract, as other communities have as well. Where the, we're no longer getting the return on recyclables that we did previously because that's one of the major factors there. Everybody's contracts have increased exponentially.
Well, that's because of China, not because of plastic bags. That's why the cost of recycling has gone up recently, that's what we've been told by all the experts.
They, they don't want to accept that, those items anymore. And one of them is very specifically, we were told, were the plastic bags. So. And I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Wallner on this one. I think we're behind what, what needs to be done on it. And I think we need to move, at least move it forward to let, let the people of the town know. And I think it's a great point that you both raise of, is it gonna, which consumers is it gonna impact? And maybe if we do implement this, it'd be something that we could offer to, you know, those, a ba, you know, a bag or something like that to help ease the cost burden of picking up a dollar bag or a dollar fifty bag at the store or something like that. So maybe there's something that we could do, you know, commit to doing as a board or as a town to be able to offset that burden.
Ready Cooperative Bag was giving away the.
For free.
The bags, the bags for free, at the seniors.
I just have faith in people being able to make their own decisions and not being forced or told what to do.
Probably, probably I could, I could agree, but sometimes, you know, that's why we have Congress, that's why it's State Senate, State House Representative, you have Board of Selectmen to help legislate and set the tone. Because sometimes we can't police ourselves, we need some assistance.
So are we, would you like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to that we recommend Article twenty-seven.
Do I have a motion or I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No, no, so we have a three to two. Three to two.
So I will report to town meeting, we have a recommendation of a three to two vote.
So now we leave it up to the town to decide.
Article twenty-eight, proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the planned unit development component of our zoning bylaw. At this point in time, we anticipate passing over the article. The board left it to be a recommendation at town meeting. I should note that passing over the article at town meeting is not, you know, finalized, but certainly the timelines associated with the town meeting are becoming much tighter. It does not necessarily foreclose the potential for this article being considered at a future town meeting, October or otherwise. My suggestion, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Schultz, you can tell me if you disagree, leave the recommendation to be made at town meeting at this point in time while the, the conversation or issue remains open.
Yeah, I, I concur.
Yeah, and the town has put out a statement on.
That's correct, it was a statement out last Tuesday with regard to this matter.
Leave it alone, recommendation we made at town meeting, as it's already written. So we've already made it, we don't have to take any action?
Oh, yes, that's right, yes, that's right.
No action required because the recommendation only made at town meeting.
I wrote that. Sorry about that.
And finally, the final article, street acceptance, we reviewed already. That concludes the presentation relative to county.
I expect this will be easier for me.
Yes.
You got some winners in there. You've got some winners there. Best for last.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. And we already left legal bills next. All right, so, so we're, not yet, no.
Number thirteen?
We're on to the next item on the agenda, which is number thirteen, which is a review of the 2019 DPW construction plan. Invite our DPW director to speak. And Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you. So, I've asked the DPW director to prepare a summary of anticipated road construction, road and other construction projects that will be going on in DPW this construction season. I do that for two reasons. The first is we often get feedback from folks, occasionally including board members, with regard to a number of the projects that have been previously approved or that are in the queue. Secondly, there's a lot of prep work for some of the paving projects in town that we feel it's important to get out there, that we are advancing the preparation work with regard to it. And I think it's also important for us to note for the residents, the timing of some of the larger work, like the paving. You know, we're trying to move to get that done as soon as possible, but we are subject to some limitations, including the contractor's availability. So, I'm going to turn it over to the DPW director for the presentation he's got here this evening with regard to a number of projects, both large and small.
Let me just ask you two before you begin. So, you have this presentation for us. Is it available for the residents to be able to access on the website as well?
We'll make it available on the town website, but this is the first. It's being previewed, and we wanted to give the board the courtesy of seeing it first.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, rooms of the board. Thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight to go over some of the larger projects that we're, we're taking on in public works this season. I have about a dozen slides or so, so not terribly long, but I'm going to hit the major projects, and I'd be happy to get into detail on anything if you, if you feel the need. The projects we want to talk about, firstly, just wanted to touch on the annual maintenance projects. We do street sweeping every year. We do catch basin cleaning every year. The paving projects I'm going to talk about were the result of many sessions with the capital improvement planning committee, a number of meetings with the town engineer, the water superintendent, and the operations manager. Tremendous amount of time and effort went into, into that plan. I can get into some detail when we, when we get to that, if you'd like to hear that. We're also going to pave a section of roadway between the, the middle and high school projects from the past there that remained sort of unpaved, and I'll get to that slide. And then I'm going to talk briefly about the recreation center in Ipswich River Park paving, which is sort of outside my purview, but we felt that it was a rather, you know, a larger project that was worth discussing here. Then I'm going to talk about some drainage projects throughout town, and then a larger water project. So, first, street sweeping. The annual street sweeping started about four weeks ago. What we do, what has been the past practice, is to start the sweeping with our own sweeper, with our own crews, and then augment that later in the season with our contracted sweeper. So, the, we've been out for about four weeks. The contractor's been in for about a week. We'll work in tandem now. What we typically do is the town will take care of all the major routes throughout town, and then when we get our contractor in, we go and we hit the side streets together. It works very well. They've been doing it in this fashion for many years. We do manage to hit every paved roadway in town that's accepted, and we certainly should be finished comfortably by August first. Catch basin cleaning, this is handled entirely by a contractor. We do this every year. They'll be doing all of the, the catch basins in town. We have approximately eight hundred, eighteen hundred and eighty of those. They've already been in town now for about a week. And again, they'll be finished by August first. Very important component.
Quick question. I did notice, I was out jogging the other day, and I noticed like when the street sweeper goes over the catch basin, it kind of clogs the catch basins.
Yeah.
Is that, I know there's probably no way around that, huh? It's just the way the sweeper-
Well, no, we should be following up on that just to make sure that those catch basins are clean. So, they do, they do tend to create some sediment debris that's left behind. What we do, particularly if there's going to be a larger storm, whether, whether there's been sweeping or not, is we know where the problem areas are, where there is catch basins that typically work, will accumulate debris, and we'll go out, you know, like we were threatening some thunderstorms. We'll send guys out to go and hit those problem areas to start, and then area, any areas maybe we were sweeping or things like that, any, where there has been construction or something like that, that has potential to have a problem with the catch basin, we'll go out and address that prior to the start of the storm.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it is part of the-
It just happens.
Exactly. So, the annual paving, I mentioned tremendous amount of effort. So, when we went to the capital improvement planning committee, we typically, just to take a step back here, what has traditionally been the funding is we get our funding sources through Chapter 90, so that's state funding, gives us about five hundred thousand. And this fiscal year was five hundred and fifteen, next year it's about five hundred and sixteen and change. Traditionally, what the town has provided is an additional three hundred thousand, so for a total of approximately eight hundred thousand in funding. In 2012, the town invested in a pavement management project, program called the Beta System. So, what that is, is a group of people come out, they review every roadway surface in town, and they apply what's called an RSR, Roadway Surface Rating, to every single paved surface in town. And then they give you basically a data set of all the different segments of roadway, and then their RSR. So, John and I use that to sort of base our anticipated paving projects. Then what we do is we look at what infrastructure needs are in the worst. Obviously, you want to address the worst roads. So, then we look at what the infrastructure needs, and some of those roadways need water main replacement, water service work, drainage, and then sometimes, some of those roadways may have gas projects that are scheduled for two or three years from now. So, obviously, we don't want to go in and pave something when we know there's a significant project coming in a couple of years. So, we did quite a bit of runaround. We, we started with, we looked at a five-year, five, five million dollar project. So, just hypothetically speaking, if we had five million dollars, how would we address it? We started out with five years. We expanded it to seven. We used, again, that beta program. We used the worst rated streets and supplemented, supplemented those with some of the, the roadways that needed lesser improvement, so to speak. And then what we looked at as a logical way to address these, and this, you know, theoretically will give us a better bid from a, from a paving contractor, is if we keep our paving projects in proximity to each other, so we don't have a street on one side, on one corner of town, another street in another corner, so they're not spread out through, through town. So, what we considered was the RSR rating, infrastructure needs, and proximity. So, we looked at basically doing neighborhoods. So, what we settled on for this year was the Peter Road, Richard Road, Victoria Road, Anthony Road neighborhood, and then Charles Street, which is close by, which has been sort of a hot topic over the last couple of years, and we're going to address that this year. So, we've been out on Peter and Anthony, replacing all the old iron services. The water, we, the water department has been up there many, many times over the past few years to address these old iron services that were installed, having a lot of breaks. So, what we're going through is we're using our own crews as well as our contractor to go in and replace all the iron services. So, we've already, we've already done a good majority of that. Our crews are working very well. We have a new contractor this year who's doing an excellent job for us out there. So, we're way ahead of schedule. We've been in contact, and we've talked to our contract, our paving contractor this year. He anticipates being able to be in North Reading by mid to late July, so that's excellent. You may have heard me mention once or twice that sort of pet peeve of mine, that we get our paving done prior to the start of school. So, this is, we are really ahead of the game here. We want to stay on their schedule, so we want to make sure that we get all of those services, all of those infrastructure needs taken care of prior to their anticipated start. We're going to do a little bit of, some drainage extension. We have a closed drainage system out there. We're going to extend some of that drainage system. John's been doing a terrific job on looking at it, ways we can help people with their sump pumps and, and, you know, really give the, the folks out there a terrific finished product. One of the, the, sort of the downsides to this is there's a number of street trees out there that are interrupting the sidewalk, and they're interfering with the roadway. So, we've looked at that. John and, John's gone out, and John's philosophy and mind differ. John will go out and take every tree down. It's sort of, he's got that engineering mentality, where I have the mentality of, I'm the guy the residents call. So, I, we're going to go out there, and we're going to have tree hearings. We're scheduling a tree hearing, and we'll have the advertisement in the paper hopefully very soon. We'll advertise that. We'll have a hearing. I've already heard from a number of residents, so we went out, we flagged all of the trees that we think need to be removed. Some of those, some of those ribbons will be removed. We'll be able to save some of the trees, I think, that are out there. But it'll give the, it'll give an opportunity for all the residents to chime in. Like I said, we've already heard from a few of them on why they want to save trees and do those, and, and preserve what they can. The folks I've talked to understand that we're going to be doing the sidewalks as well. We need to make sure that those sidewalks remain accessible. What you'll see now is if you take a ride out there, or if you take a ride down any side street that has street trees, is when you plant a tree in a two or three-foot grass strip, you wait ten years, and that tree is now, it's in the gutter, so we're hitting it with the plow, interfering with the roots. But I think even worse than that is the fact that it's heaving the sidewalk. So, many people don't use the sidewalks. It's difficult with a stroller or a wheelchair or something like that. And we have an obligation to make sure that, if we're making those improvements, that we need to make all of those sidewalks accessible.
Ridgeway Estates is a perfect example of that.
Yeah, so it-
Yeah, trees uprooting the sidewalks.
Right. And it's, it's, it's everywhere you go on the side street. So, actually, I had talked to the town administrator about making some, some funds available within my budget to replace some of those trees. You know, a lot of people like that sort of streetscape where there's some, some trees. I talked to Danielle McKnight about what the, the planning board's requirement does. So, they have a requirement for street trees that are on private property, so they're off the back of the sidewalk, which I think is a much better scenario. So, we're going to see what we can do about providing, it'll be smaller, two and a half inch or three inch diameter new trees, and replace some of the trees that we have to take out so that you don't lose that streetscape. But we're not adding a problem for the, for a future sidewalk or for a future roadway. So, with, so just to take a step back, again, back to funding, we have, you'll see it as a separate warrant article later that was for four hundred thousand, which was an addition, was going to be additional funding that brought us up to 1.5. Without that additional four hundred thousand, we're going to have to take one of the larger roads, which I think, without my glasses, is either Anthony or Peter. Those are the, those are the larger, more expensive streets in that neighborhood. Without that additional four hundred thousand, we're going to have to take one of those out from this year's paving and move it till next year.
Mr. Gilberto?
Just a clarification. So, there was a separate project for that additional four hundred thousand dollars, but it's not a separate warrant article. It's actually, it's in the capital improvement article as a separate line in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. So, if you looked at Article, excuse me, if you looked in the warrant at Article 16, fiscal year 2020 capital expenditures, you would see that there are two lines. One for an appropriation for roadway restoration in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars, and a second for roadway restoration in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Those two total a million dollars, to be combined with five hundred thousand dollars in Chapter 90 money, which I talked about earlier, for a total of approximately 1.5 million dollars. But there isn't a separate warrant.
All right, sorry.
That's all.
So, that's essentially, as far as, and again, the, the method out here, because these roads were on the bottom of the list, very poorly rated, we're going to do what's called reclamation out there. So, what we'll do is we'll have a machine that goes out, it grinds the top layer of asphalt into the, the subsurface, grinds that out. Then they, they use that as sort of a binding layer or a gravel layer. They'll relay that, and then we'll go over with two layers of, of new pavement. What we'll, what we intend to do is, and what is customary, particularly when you're doing infrastructure work, with there's trenches, deep trenches that will settle, we'll do the binder course, which is the thicker layer of pavement, which large, with larger aggregate in it. We'll do that this year. That'll give us the winter for that to settle out, all those trenches. We'll settle whatever they're going to do, they're going to do throughout the winter. Then we can address those trenches in the spring, and then we'll finish and pave that next year. Very common construction scenes.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Brown, the, the trees that, you had that like between the curb and the sidewalk, little three-foot stretch?
Yes.
Who's responsible for those trees?
So, they are in the right way. So, they, they are our responsibility.
Okay.
Yes.
So, town can decide what they want to do with those trees?
Yes, yes. But we try to, we try to be sensitive.
If we want to have citizen input.
Right. There are some very young trees out there that obviously, you know, someone may have planted to, to dress up their property, and we're sensitive to that. And it really, it does, it's a very stark look when you go and remove all the trees that people are used to seeing. As I talked to a resident who's very attached to these very beautiful maple trees he has up front, so we'll do the best we can. But when you give them the time and you explain to them, you know, what we're obligated to do and what our requirements are, you know, generally, they're pretty understanding of that.
Right.
Yeah. So, along with our paving, we do crack sealing. You may have seen them throughout town. They were over by the schools today. This is also part of our annual, annual sort of paving program. And that's simply, they, they apply a asphalt product into the cracks throughout different roadways. This is a partial list. I met with the operations manager today. We added some, some roadways here to this list. This is the roadways that you've, you've seen in past years, and John and I are working to make sure that all of the streets that we've seen in past years and past presentations that, we're fulfilling those promises. So, the crack seals will, will be out, working on these streets throughout, you see them throughout town. What we typically like to do is, you know, crack sealing is more of a preventative maintenance. So, what we'd like to do in the future is when we pave a street, you'll see cracking maybe the next year, it may take two or three years, and I think it's important to get out and crack seal those streets. And it's sort of counterintuitive, well, hey, we just paved that. But those cracks will appear within a year or two sometimes, and if you can address those cracks right away, you've done, you've gone a long way to preserving that, that new roadway. So, you'll see that in future years. You may see roadways that haven't been paved in several years, but you'll see some streets that it was, have been paved in the last few years, just because I, I think that's good practice. We expect the, the crack seals to be out relatively quickly. They, they work quickly, and they had a number of different crews going.
They were on sixty-two on Saturday.
They were here, yeah. We had three crews, I think, in on Saturday, and they were moving like gangbusters. And this is the, I mentioned the high school, middle school, east parks, entrance roadway paving project. Again, this is that section of roadway that sort of was left in limbo after the various projects that were done. They have an icing problem out there in the wintertime, so I met with the operations manager today and spoke with John in the past about what we can do to address that. So, we're going to address that. We expect the paving crew to want to just jump over to this project while they're on the Peter and Anthony project. So, we'll get out there and do whatever drainage we need to address, and then we will, we'll have them pave that as part of the, when they're out here for the Peter and Anthony project. Certainly, again, completed prior to the start of school.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I just want to say how thankful I am for that little project. I sit on the housing authority, and I approached Chairman Prisco at the time about what we could do about that.
Sure.
And he kind of took the ball and ran with that and got it done. So, I'm just really grateful to see that happen. A lot of the seniors like to walk through there to go over the rires, and so-
For a small, a small stretch of roadway, it's got a lot of attention. I've heard quite a bit of it, you know, if only, I haven't been here a year yet, so of it, you know, I haven't been here a year yet, so I've heard quite a bit about that section of roadway.
Very happy to see it.
So we're happy to get it done as well.
I think it's important to recognize, it's actually the Secondary School Building Committee that's actually funding the project.
Yes, thank you.
And so we brought that, this is going to include fixing the sidewalk too, correct?
Correct. Right. So we'll do the, some drainage sidewalk and get it, you know, basically make it a brand-new finished product right there. So then, what's on the schedule here, this is going to be under the management of Parks and Rec, but the town administrator asked me to include this. It is a relatively large paving project. So they had received funding last year to do paving around the rec center, and I took some liberties with those areas as far as the dimensions around the rec center in trying to make this presentation. They had funding for paving around the rec center, as well as a portion of the walkways. They've put in a request for the funding to pave the remainder of the walkways. Seen that bottom section, the section of road, walkways traveling throughout Ipswich River Park. So in the meantime, we've, again, we've trained, we've changed paving contractors. So they had received a price from the prior paving contractor. So we're going to be working with the new paving contractor to develop a cost and a schedule. Again, I anticipate that they're going to want to do this as part of, when they're in town, to do the other projects. And I know Parks and Rec is anxious to get at least the paving around the rec center done. Currently, it's just a gravel surface right now. And then they want to wait until they get the additional funding after town meeting, and then complete the walkway paving project as one contiguous project. So there are no seams, and they can just continue, continue to evolve once and have that interruption just at all times. So then, drainage analysis. You may have seen Upper Realm Street on the radar in the past. I know we've had a file here that I think had some inquiries going back quite a few years. The roadway surface is what people are most anxious about. It's in considerably bad shape. Part of the problem is the drainage out there. So we went, we took a look at that. There are some sort of scattered closed drainage system there. There's also some wetlands that abut a portion of the roadway. So what we've asked for is some funding to go out and do an engineering study, do some survey, and do some bid specs and look at the wetlands and what we're going to do, need to do for permitting. So we'll work with the engineering consultant starting right away, and hopefully, we can get, you know, get a bid package together. And if necessary, if they find back, see, it's very difficult to understand what exactly is going to need to be done. It may be that we can get away with a relatively small construction project that maybe we can handle in-house, or maybe we can have our current on-call person take care of, maybe handle that in-house, in which case, we can get that binder course done this year, and then finish pave the entire roadway in a future year, maybe next year. But if that project expands and becomes a larger construction project, if the, if the need for additional drainage is significant, then the project obviously expands. We just, we just don't know. We need to have that engineering analysis completed, so we'll get that done this summer. Hancock Street drainage improvement. There was a, there was a construction project out there. Two homes were added on that roadway, and the roadway was paved in years past. With the addition of a new roadway, it contributed to some stormwater runoff to abutting properties. So we've met with one particular homeowner out there a number of times, working with ways to alleviate that stormwater runoff. The town has done some work to sort of dam some runoff from the upgrading property. We added berm, add a driveway that accesses his property. So I actually was out there again today and talked to him again. We're going to continue to look at it with him, continue to work. We're going to install a new driveway culvert. He accesses his driveway, or he accesses the rear of his property. He has some trailers back there. He's very active on and off the property in that area. So we want to help him. The berm is essentially a smaller, vituminous curbing that makes it difficult for him to access the property, but it maintains the stormwater runoff in the roadway. So we're going to work with him, maybe install a driveway culvert. But we'll do a larger drainage analysis of that area and see what we can do to alleviate the stormwater runoff from going onto private property. There's a closed drainage system down at the bottom of the hill. This portion of Hancock Street has a pretty significant gradient to it. So if we can, worst-case scenario is, we can extend the closed drainage system and sort of capture that prior to the runoff, leaving the roadway and getting onto private property.
But as far as, still going to remain primarily gravel?
I'm sorry, which?
North of Dick's, yes. North of Dick's.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So we won't be...
You're not touching anything north of Dick's.
No, we're not. No, I'm sorry. Yeah. So the investigation will be from Dick's downgrade to the closed drainage system. And that's where the private property is that's having the concern. So...
And just...
Too bad.
For the, for the board members, this is a project that we did in conjunction with the development of two house lots that are there, with an interest of getting the water main expanded up towards Dick's Road, and we hope ultimately up the length of Hancock Street. But it has not been with, you know, it's not come without challenges with regard to the impact of the runoff. And we're trying to make a good faith effort to resolve the issues that appear to potentially exist out there. And I've asked the DBW director to look at it with a town engineer, with the hopes that we can find something reasonable to address any issues that might be going on. But it does not seek to expand the paved area north of Dick's Road where it is right now.
Yeah. So the Mount Vernon Street, pretty significant water main project. Again, this is something that most people are interested about because of the poor, very poor paving. You may notice, if you've been there recently, that the highway department has been out there addressing some of those sections. This was an area that, it wasn't, there was potholes on top of potholes and pothole fixes on top of pothole fixes, which made it very difficult to get out there and actually complete a repair, because there'd been so many patches upon patches. So we took a very aggressive look this year. Kudos to the highway department. They did, they did a really great job of bringing a really, really deteriorated roadway up to what I would consider a much, much better condition. But as far as the water main replacement goes, this is one of those, one of those cases where we didn't want to go out, we didn't want to include this roadway in our paving program, because we knew that we had a water main out there that needed attention. It's a 1940s vintage water main out there. We know that it's subsurface condition, it's very ledgy, so we're not sure about what the construction practices were when they installed this water main. But based on the number of breaks we had, it's likely that in some areas, there's very poor bedding. But suffice to say, we need to get in there and replace. There's two sections of main. There's a six-inch main, and there's an eight-inch main. About two-thirds of the roadway is the six-inch. So we'd like to get in there, replace that section of main, replace all of the older surfaces in the roadway, and then in following, in some following year, get out there and pave that. So get that into our annual paving program. Based on, you know, it's difficult to anticipate right now what the extent of the construction will be. So we'd like to get out right away and get a, get a engineer, engineering consultant involved. Bid and spec certainly going to be necessary for this. Construction's going to be, you know, two or three months out there at least. Likely will be a temporary water main. You see, this is actually on North 28 Redding. You see, there's a temporary water main that's top side of the roadway with connections. Will likely, that will likely be the means and methods. We'll have a temporary main while we remove and replace the older main in place. So that's going to take significant time. So it'll be two or three months. I don't know if you have a question?
I have just a question from Mrs. Darty.
Who says finish pavement course in spring 2020?
So, yeah, so I was just, I was just going to get to that. So if we can, if we can get out soon enough out of bid, it really hinges on what contractor avail, I'm sorry. No, no, I was right. So it really hinges on what contract availability is. So if we can get out of bid, if you get a contractor that's willing to come in, we can potentially fit the water main replacement in this season. Might be a little tight. Worst case is, we will get out, get the construction done in the spring, in which case, we can get the binder course right away, potentially finish course the same year, but possibly go the next year. And then, but the best, the best case is, we get it done this year, and we can finish pave next year. So that's what that last bullet is. So the best case is, we get the construction done late this year, late fall, likely into November, and then binder course that, and then finish pave next year. And those the extent of the projects I brought tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Pat.
Anybody have any questions?
No, just a Vernon Street people, that area with the driveway, happy.
Very happy.
I can know that at least it's...
Help is on the way.
Help is on the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. So we are on to the, Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for March. Is that right? Go ahead, yeah.
Are we moving this on?
Go ahead.
We're skipping around, so, go ahead.
In the amount of $4,461.59.
Not to read all of that.
Second.
One second.
Yep.
As follows. Copman and Page, 1,604.59. Copman and Page, 2,0432. Thompson West, 425, for a total of $4,461.59.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We skipped over liaison assignments, which is number 15. So it's in the Dropbox, I believe, and I have, I brought copies for everybody too, as well. Do you want to just take one and pass it along?
Share file or Dropbox?
Oh, I think it's in share file, yes. Mr. Gilberto, are the liaison assignments in share file?
They're in the meeting folder for this evening, in share file, as a separate document.
All right. And should we run them down, or are you all going to look at them on your own time? Or does anyone have any questions?
I would just have one question. Is it okay for me to still go to CPC meetings, even though I'm not a liaison?
In there.
Good.
Post-meetings.
Any meeting you want.
Okay. Just want to be sure, because it's already heating up with HEFRON and everything else like that. So I know I'll spend some time there.
Sure.
That's the biggest thing.
Sure. And this will be, it's typically found on the website in the board, the board's, the board's section, right, Mr. Gilberto?
I believe we post the liaison assignments under the Select Boards page, in addition to putting it in the Dropbox, excuse me, share file folder. There's a separate folder that, it's not in yet, but subject to review at tonight's meeting. But we'll move it into the Board Liaison Assignments folder, which is also in share file.
All right. So let us go back to, kind of skipped over Board Member Reports, but we'll do Board Meeting Schedule next. We're skipping all over the place tonight. So let's move on. It's number 17. So I think in the package, you did give some proposed meeting date.
We did, through you, Madam Chair. We did take our best attempt at a proposed meeting schedule based on the work at hand, the October Town Meeting, et cetera. And what we came up with is a list of meetings. So the board's next meeting would be on Monday, June 10. That is the evening of June Town Meeting. June Town Meeting scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM. The board would likely be meeting at 6:00 PM that evening, and we traditionally meet in the high school principal's conference room. That would be at, I expect that to be at 6:00 that evening. The following Monday, Oct., excuse me, June 17 would be a regular board meeting. We'd conduct the water rate hearing at that meeting, and our custom has been to conduct that hearing shortly after town meeting. That's the next opportunity. And then, looking at the way the calendar falls and the timing of the Fourth of July holiday, we're proposing a meeting on Monday, July 15.
So no meeting on the first?
That would mean that there would not be a meeting on Monday, July 1. That's crucial.
July 15.
And then, following in the board's approach to the meeting schedule last summer, we scheduled the next meeting in August. So one meeting each in July and August. We selected August 19 because it coincides with the deadline for October Town Meeting warrant article submission. So that evening, you'll know all of the articles that have been submitted for October Town Meeting. And then, just factoring the Labor Day holiday, the next meeting would be Monday, September 9. And you would be asked to sign the October Town Meeting warrant that evening. And we'd get back into the regular cycle of every other, of the first and third Mondays, with the meeting occurring on September 23 for warrant article informational hearings. And then, town meeting would occur on Monday, October 7. The board would, of course, meet that night.
Madam Chair, are we on summer dress, starting on June 17?
Aren't you already on summer dress? I'm just kidding. So, yes, we do a little bit more relaxed dress code for those who choose to not wear your gowns to the meetings.
Golf shirt. Golf shirt season.
Okay, golf shirt.
Any questions? Are all the members available, or does that schedule work for everybody?
Who knows?
Yeah.
I have to check with my social director.
I'll be driving back from New Jersey, so I'll do my best, and all right?
I'm good all the way around.
You're good.
Okay. On the 21st, I'll show you around the meeting. The Dr. Long and 21st, okay. All right. So moving along to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of this is leftover from the last meeting when I waived the reading of the report, or some of it. I provided a copy of a certificate of recognition that the Community Impact Team presented to the board for its five years of support of the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. I also referenced, but I don't think I actually attached the actual letter, Representative Brian Jones identified funding, which I think we talked about in the last board meeting, in the amount of $75,000 for a police department simulator, as well as $75,000 for the school department's one-to-one device initiative. If they were funded in the final budget, the police department capital request could be offset. The school department's request would be in addition to the funding that Representative Jones is seeking. We've put some additional information relative to the proposed 20 Elm Street, Chapter 40B project up on the website, including information regarding wetland delineation that was submitted to the Conservation Commission now three weeks ago. I just would refer folks to the statement that we put out last week relative to the project, and a meeting that took place on Monday, May 13. I'm not going to read the statement here, but it is up on the town website. Just for residents who are paying attention and interested in alternatives for disposing of waste, Household Hazardous, excuse me, Household Waste Collection Day, not Hazardous Waste Collection Day, will be held on Saturday, June 8 from 9:00 to 12:00 noon. This will be for special items, paper and rigid plastic, and flyers are attached to my report. Hazardous waste collection scheduled to take place in November. DBW completed street sweeping on the main roads, as the DBW director indicated. A neighborhood schedule will be, will be proposed and posted in conjunction with a contractor over the next few weeks. The DBW director did mention that there is tree removal required with the Peter and Anthony Road paving project, and there will be a hearing scheduled in the next few weeks with regard to that. I am pleased to announce the appointment of Brian Latendre and James Casalotto as firefighters in the Fire Department, and I included information relative to their appointment with my report. And I want to thank Select Board Member Gonzalez for joining us that morning for their swearing in. Thank you, Leanne.
Very welcome.
And finally, I'm pleased to announce that in their review of $2.7 million in general obligation municipal purpose bonds, and $7.2 million in bond anticipation notes, Moody's has affirmed the town's AA2 credit rating. The AA2 rating reflects a moderately sized tax base with above-average resident wealth and income, a very stable financial position with growing reserves, and above-average debt burden with manageable pension liability. Again, another testament to the board and the financial planning team's efforts to manage the town's finances. And we certainly appreciate the positive feedback from the bond rating agency. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Questions? Any members have any questions?
Not on that. Just a question to the administration, just on the status of the subdividing and disposition of Mill Street property?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. We do have a proposal that came back from Hancock Associates that proposes to draw the, so draw the property lines in accordance with what our desires are. That's something that we'll need some feedback from a number of folks, including representatives of the Board of Appeals. And we expect to have a meeting with that working group shortly for potential action.
I just drove by. I was wondering what we're doing with that.
Yeah. We've got the report back recently. We've kind of batted it around.
The new members, this is the piece of property that we purchased on Mill Street for location of a pumping station for water, to anticipate to join in with Redding and NWRA. So we were fortunate to be able to secure the property, but now we don't have a compelling need for all of it. So what the board, previous board decided was to retain some of the upland for future municipal use, if needed, since we own it now, subdivide it, and sell the house off. So we'll recoup some of our...
And it wouldn't affect the character of the lot?
It won't.
It's still be a perfectly fine, same family home.
It won't affect the character of the lot of the neighborhood. And again, the town will be able to retain a portion of it for whatever it needs maybe.
Where is that?
Mill Street. You know, Mill Street is a park street heading down towards Carter Street. Mill Street is on your left, lateral road, Mill Street. And just before you get to the Ipswich River, at the Redding line.
Last house in North Reading?
Uh, last house on the left.
Because it was a town line for the water.
So, but we purchased it a couple of years ago.
Next to historical bridge.
Yeah, next to the historical, Redding Bridge, yes. But anyway, so we were fortunate to be able to get it, because at that particular point in time, we were heading to the NWRA, and we needed a site for it. It was a perfect location. First piece of property in North Reading. But now we don't need it, per se, or all of it.
Anyone else have any questions for the town administrator? Mr. Gilberto?
I do not have a question for myself, but I do have one other item that I would like to just make the board aware of, which is that the Redding, North Reading Chamber of Commerce has asked me to provide an update relative to matters ongoing in the town. And I'll be doing so on Thursday, May 30, beginning at 11:30 AM at the Horseshoe Grill. So board members certainly welcome to attend if they so choose.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. We'll move on to selectmen's reports and all the new business all at once. So, Mr. O'Leary, would you like to start us off?
Sure. First of all, you know, I'd like to mention the passing of Charlie Jones. And I don't know if you have Charlie.
I beg to...
Charlie was an educator in the town of North Reading for probably 40-plus years. He was primarily a history teacher, who became principal, vice principal, mentor to hundreds, if not thousands, of students here in North Reading. And famously, well...
And famously well-known for his cross-country trips, taking all the kids, I mean, generation of kids across country during the summer months, and really became a true friend to literally thousands of people, and mentors to thousands of students here in North Redding. And Charlie passed away after a battle with terrible disease. But we're certainly grateful for Charlie's services to the community, and again, it was recognized just a couple of years ago when we named a portion of the new school after him, which was great, and a wonderful honor, which I knew he enjoyed and really appreciated. But to Claudia, his wife, and his family, condolences, and again, we're a far better community for, for Charlie Jones, haven't been here, respect his career. So it's unfortunate that he passed away. And just on a subcommittee note, I already asked about the subdivision, but we continue to work for finding a location for our chlorination treatment facility, 28, in relation to the water project with Andover. In order to complete the FEIR, we need to, you know, have this location. We're still in discussions with a couple of property owners, and we have two more potential property owners who are willing to sit down and discuss potential locations on Northern Main Street in the next week or so. So we continue to make some progress here. We hope that we have it nailed down by now, but you know, every once in a while, we have a little wrinkle in the plans. But still progressing, still moving forward, and appreciate these other two property owners willing to sit down and discuss the possibilities with us, so that's positive. On that, I'll send Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
I just had the occasion to go to the CPC meeting recently, the combined CPC/EDC meeting, and Mr. Heffron was down here to talk about his ideas for what he can do with his property concerning our town center. I've known Mr. Heffron for about two years now, and it was a very collegial discussion. He would really like to, to work with the town to create some sort of legacy project that the town could take advantage of, and he's looking for direction from us. The CPC received it very well, and the suggestion was made, that I had made two years ago, which is that at some point, we need to create a task force where people from CPC, EDC, potentially from the Select Board, where we can start to really examine this in a orderly fashion and start to take this, these type of, that type of area of development quite seriously. The surveys, I mean, we'll see it in the strategic plan, but we'll also see it, you know, when they give a formal presentation about that. But, you know, the town has been very supportive, based on the 600 respondents we've had, to doing some sort of mixed-use development in that area, creating a downtown. And we'll say, again, it's everything I think we've all thought about, and it's, you know, it's kind of coming to us, which is really nice. But we have to be able to, we have to be able to be responsive. And so I think actually the Select Board needs to take, you know, needs to understand it, but then at some point, affirm what we're hearing from people and support it as well, if we agree with it. So that's, I think it's the most important thing.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
That's a big one.
That's a big one.
Again, just want to congratulate my colleagues to left and right of me here for joining the jungle here, welcoming aboard. One thing I want to speak out, the Healthy Kids Running Series at IRP, I had never seen such a turnout. They had probably, I don't know, hundreds of kids doing all different size races, for all different size ages. The little guys were going maybe 100 yards, the big ones were running around the hole. It was really an amazing process, and I just want to thank the folks. It's too many, I think our youth spends too much time on screens and iPhones these days, and it's good to see them out running. And it's, it was a nice project. I happened to stumble on it one day I was in the park, and I was amazed at the turnout.
Who was involved?
It was, I know some, Matt Quinlan was involved. I'm not sure who actually was behind it, but it was literally hundreds of kids doing physical activity on weekend day, which you don't see anymore. So that was a really nice program, and I thanked them for doing it. That's all.
Mrs. Gonzalez. Anything?
No.
All right, then I will. Yeah, I have to have a turn. I know. I just want to remind people that Memorial Day is coming up, and it's a day that we keep in remembrance and honor of our service members who have died in fighting, fighting for us. And Mr. Wallner is going to be bringing the greetings of the board. And there should be information about where people can attend the services posted somewhere for, and if you want, Mr. Gilberto, if you have any information on that.
I'm happy to review. Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing to my attention that we did not have it posted up on the website. So for those who are interested, there is an assembly that begins at Riverside Cemetery at 6:45 on the morning of Memorial Day, with a ceremony at Riverside Cemetery at 7:00, Harmony Vale Cemetery at 7:45, Ipswich River Park Blue Star Memorial at 8:30, and then at the Park Street Cemetery at 8:45. That's followed by the Memorial Day Parade, which gathers beginning at 9:30 at the top of the common, leaving the common promptly at 10:00. And that is followed by the actual ceremonies themselves on the common, weather permitting, beginning at 11:00 AM on Monday morning.
And so for any of the members that are going to be here, or end up being here and want to march in the parade, right, there'll be a contingency that usually, what marches together, so.
People in the Montverne Street area will be welcoming us with open arms and.
They already said they were.
Telling us to watch out.
I think I brought umbrellas last year, and, you know, but it's a nice town event, and you don't have to, people can come to watch the parade, or come to watch the speakers, or go to the cemetery and not do any of the other things. It's just nice events scheduled to be able to remember the day and remember our service members. And then, I just want to make another service reminder about that, that North Redding Food Pantry Fund Drive, and that they have a GoFundMe page, and it's their, their capital fund drive because the union congregational gave them space, so they want to convert the space to be their new location. So they have this page online. It's at www.gofundme.com/NRFPHomeFund, or you can mail your donations to PO Box 626 North Redding, Mass. 01864. And that's it, and welcoming our two board members again. We look forward to working with you. Mr. Gilberto has another question, comment?
The TA report that won't end this evening.
And another thing. And another thing.
I do want to make the board aware that the, I received a call from Ms. Imbriano of the school committee asking if I'd be willing to participate on the search committee for superintendent of schools. And just to make sure that everything was in order, I did consult with town council to make sure that there wasn't any conflict with me participating in my role as town administrator, given that I do have one child and will soon have a second child in the public schools, and he'll pine that there was not a conflict from that standpoint. So I am intending to participate in, in that search committee's work. They do have an aggressive timeline, where they're looking to have candidates forwarded to the school committee, I believe, by the end of June. There was a meeting scheduled this evening. The meeting needs to be rescheduled to next Tuesday, but the hope is to try to maintain the timeline, from what I understand. And I'll do my best to keep the board up to date, you know, given, you know, while understanding the, the fact that there aren't going to be many meetings of this board during that time because of the town meeting and otherwise. But I will be participating, and I look forward to the process.
That'll be great. I think that they, they, I don't know if they're still looking for them, but they did send out a request for.
They're all, they picked the people.
Volunteers, yeah. I know, I just know Ms. Eric Evans is going to be serving on the search committee. So anyone that stepped forward to serve, I think that's wonderful. And I think it works out better that you have kids in the school systems, you know, because you know what, what's going on there, and you know what they're going through, and that doesn't mean people that don't should be eliminated, of course. They can participate just as well, but.
Sure.
I think it's good. All right, so with that, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Do you need a second? Oh, my word, 10:20. I just lost my bat.